Mr. Kansiger?
Yes.
Mrs. Garros?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
If anyone would please join me in the play of allegiance.
Play of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for a few minutes?
Seven.
If there were any...
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rudolph, please take your role.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kansiger?
Yes.
Mrs. Garros?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Next, we're going to go through committee updates. Circle it up here, committee, if you have an update, if there's anything new that's happened since last hour, if you have upcoming meetings. Mrs. O'Toole, the audit committee.
I have no report.
Policy committee, again, Mrs. O'Toole.
We're working on a date for a meeting, but we don't have one yet.
Got you. Business advisory, Mrs. Garvey.
No report.
Capital planning, Mrs. Garvey.
Dr. Hunt, we are going to schedule a meeting, I think, for our first quarter on capital planning.
Yeah, I sent an email out just before the meeting, so it's been interesting. We haven't, I haven't reached back yet, so...
Okay, that'll be great. We're trying to, we're aiming for quarterly meetings, we do it four years, if we do it, maybe before spring break, but if not right after, that'll be great. Thank you for coordinating.
Would that be the school's third quarter, then?
Don't want to get too big reasons. And the finance and budget committee also has no report, we haven't had a meeting since the last report.
And records and tension, I have no report for that at this point. I'm going to turn over the meeting to Dr. Hunt.
Good evening, thank you. Just a couple of brief reports this evening, and they relate to recommendations for their calendar agenda under my recommendation. So, we've got Ryan Schmidt, who has become a man who needs no introduction, TDA here this evening. Ryan is going to give us kind of our overview of traffic pattern impact with the reinstillation courts, tennis courts. With the 1.4 asset, they took a look at that at TDA, very bad, any thoughts or recommendations? So, we're going to circle back around as later you'll be asked to approve a recommendation for the reinstillation court. So, Ryan, can you just walk through the traffic pattern implications and implications for next year? And then talk just briefly about the bidding coverage and what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I'm Ryan Schmidt, TDA architecture. Yeah, we received the bids, I'll start with that. The bidding was very competitive, we ended up with five bids for the tennis courts, which was very good coverage. We had all big players that are in the industry, in the area, bidding it. And the price grouping was very good, everybody was in within probably about a, I think, $30,000, $40,000 window, which on $4,000 is pretty good, pretty good grouping. The low, parent low bidder is Navy Site Contracting, which is local to the area. So, their advantage is that they're local, and that's why the cost is a little lower, they have less travel, less things of that nature, their yard is right down the street. They did go through the process of vetting out their bid, TDA and Lewis Land Professionals both called on them separately, Lewis Land being the engineering group that worked with us on this project. And we went through and we vetted out the documents and the conclusions and all those sorts of things, and it was very comprehensive. They, everything covered, all the right answers. They're ready to roll on this project, and they are really excited about the opportunity. So, we have a good feeling for that. They're a big firm that does lots of this type of work, and they hired as their tennis consultant at company, that that's what they do. It's essentially their, the names are scary to me, but they're from the western part of the state, and that's all they do is export support their exports. So, I feel really comfortable. As far as the impact to the rest of the site, putting that out there, we aren't...
Good question. Were there any add-ons on the, on the project?
No, so...
Can you talk a little bit about the drainage?
Yes. Yes, so, everything we did in this process was to improve situations. So, the drainage that could have been done would be nothing, because essentially we're taking what is already there and doing nothing. But instead of doing that, we did go through the process of creating an underground detention system. Essentially, it's a series of chambers to collect down at one end of the tennis courts. And so, essentially, what you'd see, like that basin to the south that's over by the baseball field down there, where you'd see an above-ground basin like that, this has that, but it's buried below the ground in chambers. So, down underneath one section of it, there would be a series of chambers to collect water. And that's again to improve the capacity of that area of the site. Again, per TDA requirements, wouldn't need it to necessarily, but knowing limitations with the site, knowing some of the, the water runoff that you have across the area, and just the future of improvements on the site, this was a very sound time to do it. You have very little space outside of that area to be adding a bunch of attention, and being able to put it under the courts as we're already excavating, we're already putting in drainage associated with the courts. This was, this was a very home run sort of situation, already did the basketball floors, essentially.
Will it extend the life of the courts, though?
No, because from the standpoint of, we would have had proper drainage one way or the other. What this does is it improves everything around it, essentially. So, the courts themselves would have been good either way. This improves your peripheral areas around the courts, which I guess in theory would help with the courts themselves, but it's adjacent parking lot, or water pools, and some areas, and drives and things. You're still going to have some puddles in some of the existing lots, but all that water that hits into the ground and has nowhere to go, it has somewhere to go, like this system. There'll be collecting that and some storage for it. So, in general, that portion of the site should see improvement for it. And consequently, your neighbors that are right off that, that side of the site should see, they may never notice it, but there is a calculatable difference in the amount of water that would be able to come down that hill. So, it's, it's improving that situation across the board, so...
So, it gets captured, and slowly, more slowly sees back?
Yeah, so, it's essentially taking an above-ground basin, putting it in these chambers, so nobody will ever see it. So, there's going to be this perception, nothing's done, but as they're doing that work, as they're doing that excavation, these chambers are put in, and it's covered up. And so, it's less noise, or less of something to maintain down the road, but you still have the capacity in that, in that system. So, it's a, it's a brilliant system.
Just a question, is it like buried in chambers, I mean, is sediment collecting it all the time?
No, and there's such that you can clean them out if you ever needed to, but there shouldn't be much sediment. They essentially get these, either essentially half-pipe type system, they get a rap over the top of it to prevent a lot of sediment getting in there. So, it's really from that kind of gravel percolation that you'd see water coming in. That's really no different than the sort of basin or system like that. So, it's, this is very common. Any, any of the urban zones, you'd see this sort of system, it's a very consistent system, so it's a good system. Any other questions with that? Ryan, timeline? Timeline, they're ready to start with the seminal process. We do have drawings into the village and to the village engineer, just to see if they have any additional comments. Just the first cursory reviews from the village engineer, as he said, we did everything. He said things were looking like everything was done in the correct manner, so I don't foresee any issues with that. So, in theory, they'd be ready to roll. Our office does generate contracts, so having some form of pool in the night would be able to get contracts lined up and ready for, you know, signing and stuff of that nature. The thing I would want to do right off of that is start getting some of this seminal process started, so that we can get materials lined up. And then, if there's any potential to start early, that's always a good opportunity to, if that's something that people are open to. So, with weather, the way it is, we couldn't probably turn around and start tomorrow and hope for the most success. As things start dry out tomorrow, that's when we're going to see our biggest benefits. So, there is going to be that window, we're just going to have to talk through that window contract and see when they think that window is, when the weather breaks to the point where you have an assistant work. Because going up there and hitting the site all muddy and not being able to work, it doesn't help anybody either. So, there is that threshold, like it's usually bottom line, you know, when that goes through the optimal. But in going through the schedule, assuming that we start at the end of the year, they saw no reason they couldn't meet the deadline of August 3rd and be done. So, if we get them added time, it should only help the situation. And just to explain one more time really quickly, when they start doing that process, you're going to see a ton of work right away. They're going to be doing all the excavation, they're installing all the piping, they're going to gravel it with the asphalt gap, it's going to sit there a month. So, just want everybody to know that, that's, that's going to happen. Because the asphalt basically has to off-gas, and so, you'll get questions about that, I'm sure.
And there's no variance, is required?
We're going back to the work, so there's really no change in use, no change in anything. And we're not creating additional hick's gig. All we're doing is making improvements, so I don't foresee any issues. We've had ongoing conversations with those, I haven't heard any issues that they have with the supplemental. But we're double checking.
Other questions?
As far as the resulting work and what it does for parking, it does take off about 60 spaces, 60, 64 spaces. We did go through the numbers that are provided, and the number of passes that are currently provided to seniors and juniors. And it appears that in that right lot space that's over by the middle school, if we take essentially the first kind of collection of parking that's up against the curb, and then that center portion, we would be able to accommodate those students. I think that's the optimal location, it keeps the students on that same path that everybody is utilizing presently. It groups them on the inside of the bus lanes, so that they're not having cross bus traffic when they're walking, they're essentially crossing over at two crosswalks, which are presently there. So, for all those reasons, I think it's optimal to locate them there. And then, their dismissal at the end of the day would coincide, and they'd follow the same pathways that all the other students would as well. So, while it does push them further down the line, and it does create a little bit of disruption to some of that parking over in that location, it does, I think, meet the intention of what we were trying to do with the student parking all along, and it doesn't really take away from that. The only expense that you would have is striping for that one crosswalk, which is located up by the formula center, and that's just really reinforced that.
So, it's a park center now?
It's a mix of teachers and visitors. And we, in the plan that we have, though, we're maintaining the ADA spaces that are right adjacent to the crosswalk itself, it's down across from the middle school, and we're maintaining seven visitor parking spaces. So, primarily, the people that would be affected would be the staff over in that area. They would be pushed to the outside of that parking lot, and then they would, someone would fill in in the green lot, which is located to the south. So, that's already a staff block down to the green lot. And that back portion, since the teachers get there at a slightly different time than the students, it would make more sense for the teachers to be parked along the backside of the parking lot.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to hear during the day, so I assume they're open spacer right now?
There are, I mean, we, we think we can make this work. I mean, it may result in less students, I mean, it just really depends on how many students want to drive to be there, and how much we want a lot more overflow for that certain day.
I know I stopped in today, and I was way in the back of that staff lot. Any thoughts about the students who are walking via the rack and then crossing right, right over here? Do we ever strike to crosswalk there? What I love about the old plan, which of course they could let go of, was that there were no students crossing where there were pedestrians crossing. Is there anything we can do to improve that, which I think is a pretty, pretty heavy traffic crossing?
About, all you can do with any of them is switch present day buildings in several locations. Do the elevated ones, that causes people to slow down. The marker in the middle, like you have there, is a, is a good device as well. You can add lights and blinkers and stuff, but after one time, people can do those things up. So, they do not get lost, people, even though once, that, that sticks with you. But, I mean, something like that, I would not, as you're doing other work on the site, I would recommend doing that, because that does involve asphalt, it does involve concrete, it's not, it's easy as necessary, folks. So, it's, it's a pretty intensive thing to try and do.
Right.
Not necessarily super expensive, but you are bringing on multiple trades to do, that's what we have to do.
And we have asphalt work scheduled for this summer, right? To do the middle school lot, and to, are we creating this actual turnaround? I guess we have it painted.
Yeah, that's there. I, I don't know about the asphalt work in that lot, honestly.
We are not finding work for this summer, but we just want to, you know, paving probably down this summer.
But it is scheduled or ready?
It is scheduled, we can have. That would be the next on the pavement, scheduled on this campus, would be the middle school lot. In fact, in this red area where 64 spaces are, we still have work on the northern part of that lot. I would say, you know, probably the bottom three-fourths of that lot, or the south three-fourths of that lot, are, are near the end of their useful life. It did get seal coated last year, cracked, so I feel like it's got two years in it. We're going to do, we'll add, that would be the next piece on this campus, and it'll be part of our five-year paving plan, we update, you know, next time we're working on updating our five-year paving plan, and that's at a top priority on this campus, as it has tonight.
Yes, would you, would you look at the possibility of doing a raised cross? I know it's a little tricky there, because you've got, you'd have to come from the grass area, but maybe we just have a path for the students to get them onto that grass area and come over a raised? When, when the middle school work is done, just something to evaluate and maybe get a cost on. And I could see it benefiting people who perk near the tennis courts as well, and maybe able to access the path via that raised cross.
The one that's north of the Performance Arts Academy, it's, it's, I just started out?
Right, right.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, all right. Good, thank you. The other recommendation, the other recommendation we'll see later is regarding the website, we didn't update it before report. If there's any questions regarding that recommendation, it's essentially a whole.
I have a question, the resolution isn't attached to the part.
In the group?
There are a lot of...
I was talking about the Texas courts. For the, for the contract for the tennis? Yeah. I don't think we've seen the contract.
You will issue the contracts, correct?
Yeah.
After you approve this?
Yeah. I believe this is authorization and procedures based on $50 whether to enter a new contract with, right? But it will be...
Correct. Any question? Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, is time altered, will the meeting order be suspended?
Thank you. So, this is on my report section, it's not necessarily a report, it's more of a session. First thing I wanted to bring to your attention is this, this paper, and I know that it's very hard to read. It was a PDF, I could not change it. This is just the calendar for the elections, I did highlight the dates. So, if we are still considering an August budget, we would need to have everything to the county and certified with the county by base six. We do have to do two resolutions prior to that, so that would put us this month making a decision. So, I just want to point that out, if we're, we're still looking at August, we need to make a decision probably tonight. If we're moving to November, we do have some more time to make the final decisions. So, just want that on everybody's radar, we can hopefully start our session. Next thing in the packet that I've provided to you is the summary of the financing options. At the last meeting, we asked for some detail on the COPs financing options. I sent to you in a separate email the actual amortization schedules, so you can have those. This table, all this does is just kind of put it in a nice, pretty little format, so that we can compare, so that you can see the differences. Biggest difference going from, on the issuance expenses, which is the fourth line down, when you go from a 10-year to a 20-year, the expenses on the issuance costs do increase significantly. The reason for that, the way it's explained to me, is that on a 10-year COPs, he would recommend, or that anybody, I guess, would recommend, doing it as a direct placement. So, that means we would just place the instrument with a bank. So, we wouldn't have to do grading, and go off to the market, and go out and ask our investors like we would with a 20 or 30. He said the 10-year is pretty much the limit on that, I know I was asked that question, if we can do a direct placement on a 20 or 30, he said. I read it for the 10. Oh, the other thing that changes significantly is the bond council, or that's part of that, the reason that that increases so much is because of the bond council. That almost doubles, and that is just because there's a lot more people work, a lot more legal when you're going out to the market. There is one mistake on here, the total issuance expense is only $4 million on a project on the 20 or 30-year. He typed in 134, I was actually looking at the numbers, it's actually 144.5. Doesn't change anything, I know, but I just wanted to be sure that you guys all saw that. So, total debt service payments, you can see at the bottom, that was one of the questions and concerns on the instrument. So, those are there. What I did in all of these areas, and I realize this feels like a really thick packet of scenarios, thicker than we've discussed, is tried to print off every possible combination somebody might want to see tonight, because I did want to get, if we're suddenly in August, which we want to get in December.
I think we can think of something.
So, I'm sure you can, and that's why I do have the worksheets on my computer in front of me. So, if you think of something I did not anticipate, I can still run it. So, I'm just going to kind of dive in here and go with what, what I do have. So, the past few conversations we've had about this, I think we've pretty much narrowed it down to we have to go in this calendar year. So, in the previous scenarios, I had options for '21 and '22, those are not on here, and these are all for this year. This scenario, the way I printed all of these, looks a little bit different from what I have provided to you in the previous conversations. As we started getting more and more details, I realized the way I had it formatted was not really working. Because the way I had it formatted originally was how it affected just our bottom line. I didn't show total revenue, total expenses, and all those things. So, here, I think, is a little bit more easier to look at these, a little bit more easier, pardon my English. It is a little bit easier to look at these than the previous scenarios that you've looked at before. Information is still essentially the same. Top right-hand corner of each one, highlighted in blue there, is what this scenario contains. And then, down the right-hand side, you'll see where the village is going. So, for example, the first one labeled 1 at the top is a combined 6.9. I think there was some interest in the last meeting to see if we could go lower than 7.9 and still make it. The first two scenarios you see there are 6.9 and then 7.9. These do not include doing the bus garage. So, the bus garage is not in here, and gurney stemming is not in any of these, and was, I think we agreed the last, the last conversation, that gurney would kind of come off of these scenarios for now. So, these first two, you have, this is no bus garage, this is if we did not do the bus garage.
Ever, in this?
In this next, yes. Right. So, and, and I, because I was asked to see what it would look like. So, I, I don't think there's a lot of interest there, I provided it, if you would like to see it, there it is.
I mean, it's not possible, right? We need the bus garage, and that's...
Certainly is a recommendation, if you're asking, definitely is the possible.
Well, it's, it's more like they bet we'll end up with, that's, that's a long process more. And we don't have that believable, yeah.
Yeah, and if you look at those, it doesn't get you a whole lot further anyway. 6.9, we're still only going to get three years, maybe four. 7.9, you know, we can get four years out of that, but again, that's, we're going to get projects off that they end up seeking, it's more money to it. So, moving on to number three, this is a 7.9 combined levy. Three and four, both are 7.9 combined, so you'll be able to see at the bottom, the ending balance is exactly the same, it's the same village. The only difference between these is I put more, I moved from item three, it's 5.9 in the general, and two in PI, and then on four, we have 4.05 in the general, and 3.85 in the PI. The reason I did 3.85, I know before we were talking four and 3.9, I made a 3.85 because that is the actual reduction in the village as a, as a result of the, the bond's volume. So, if that is the route we wanted to go, we wanted to be able to say, what's going into the PI, it's exactly what's coming off of your village, that's what it would look like. You agree with me?
And is the PI village, is that subject of dine tourney?
Yeah.
So, it's...
Inside village is not, but the voting is still...
The nice thing is the inside village, the variable is all in, on general, which I want. What can I go with in the general?
What if you get 4.5 mill's total, same as four? Four? Woo, because four mills are great. Okay, is there anything I should be looking at? Eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13? So, don't even look at it. Those, those were all of the different, those were all of the COPs scenarios.
So, came in a little bit under, what are you expecting? No change, or is that right? Just tennis courts. Well, you never know.
I wouldn't say that out loud. Any other discussions? All right, Mr. Rudolph, please take your role.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kansiger?
Yes.
Mrs. Garros?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Right, on the treasure recommendations, kind of a motion for treasures recommendations, 10A through 10B?
Seven.
Second.
Item 10A is the tax rate resolution. This is where you'll see the 3.85 mills being reduced, if you actually look at the rates. The bond retirement fund, the amount that we are looking to pay on is 4.3 mills. In the last year, if you pulled the same resolution from last year, you would see an 8.15 there. So, that's where the 3.85 reduction is. Item B is equipment disposal, there are some items, there's a desk, I believe, a shelving unit, and some fitness equipment. Are you recommending approval of the sales?
Any discussion? Mr. Rudolph, please take your role.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kansiger?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Garros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other business they'd like to introduce?
Just trying to do through the spring court schedule, and there is a bid, move for a couple of hours together for, to get some info, especially in the area of buying this efficiency, this G plan. So, you'll have a detailed summary from all the focus groups that they gather, here in March and April, would like to present that to you, and then we can use the conversation. And I just threw a couple of options, whatever other business for your consideration, if you see you can get back to it. You could have it ready to build by the 6th board meeting, you can, you can talk about it, you can, you can, you know, if you have a work, if you have a part, or you can per hour, hour and a half, as an option, or if you want to try to come together, have a session on the second day of the floor, a couple of hours, so, maybe second, at night, and acknowledge with you, and really definitely for Ashley. So, do you need a conversation, Ashley, on these, or this conference, or this progress?
May second, I would not give a [inaudible].
I'm in Florida with my daughters. Your question.
What do you have in your top list with the sixth, or the eleventh, or the fourth, or the dinner?
Six is the day that I come back from work, so obviously my airplane is on time. That's.
Directly.
Do you look at, what do you have slated for the sixth?
I don't know.
Sometimes the spring meetings get.
Uh, there's some staffing recommendations coming.
One thing that I challenge about it was to keep each meeting of two major topics at a maximum per meeting. Letting last meeting get five, that I counted major topics. And personally, as I recall, that's a good thing.
It's two hours that you need?
That, that's roughly what Chris talked about.
My preference would be not to put it right before a board meeting because we're setting ourselves up for at least a three-hour meeting where she was like allowed to be, like, why would we do that, Cinco de Mayo?
Okay, that's ridiculous.
And meet at the Mexican restaurant because Ashley is not here.
Yeah. I'm eating at a Mexican restaurant, so.
Yeah, no, that's true, no.
Oh, you won't eat, sorry. I mean, it's, it's fine, I can do either, um, the ninth or the sixth, but just so we know. I, I prefer the sixth, just goodbye of no idea what that time is. Yeah, can you just try and keep that meeting like that? Any ideas? Have they updated that meeting?
Um, yes.
The tenth is Mother's Day.
It has to be. At, at ten o'clock, I started using my ability to narrow talking and play and start to.
Are we getting four or five?
Is she going to have a sex?
Yes.
Help them with us to clear. Ashley, what's your, what's your forecast?
So we're testing the twentieth probably.
So we will, we, because I'm looking at the sixth, staffing recommendations. So we'll probably bring that up to the twenty, if it will come right before that. So we have the recommendations that will be tied to the.
Then you think you could start a little later? Have it replace the meeting as a trigger?
With the sixth meeting, it'll be shorter.
No, I was just trying to give it a six.
It would tend to fly like very early. Okay, very.
See you at the airport at like six in the morning. I'm still not yet.
Well, that takes a while.
I, I will do my best to clear any of this report. I usually want, I just, I do not want to remove an action. I still want to probably take action. And I'll, I'll try to remove anything that's reported out or that we can discuss with general business, definitions, all that.
No, that's great.
That will come.
This one's probably quicker than this.
It is.
You're not planning on bringing any new hires at this point? We wouldn't be discussing any new headcount, uh, just replacement for science.
Yeah, just, well, we're looking at social studies right now, science.
I mean, new, I mean, new positions, additional headcount, okay, that'll make it easier.
Well, I mean, the copy out's always, um, okay.
Right.
So right now we've got, I think, we checked today with, I think, some in the final forms that have started forms. So when that number gets over a hundred, then we're starting to talk about an additional ID in there. So that's the one that's allowed our. No additional programming that requires that.
Would that be a new person or a shift?
A, a new person. A person that had been reduced prior.
Someone that's been.
Uh, we did it through Chris.
Okay, any other, other business? Uh, our next meeting, so we're going to be canceling, March eighteenth, the sports awards. So I think our next meeting would be April first, which, Sharon, you, you have a vote here?
No, I, I do.
Okay, the first was the, uh.
Induction.
Yeah.
Yes.
A lot of them are.
Do you remember the speaker? It's usually not very long.
Is that seven? It's six thirty. And Grant's not also in the company for you?
Yes.
So we, we want to push the meeting back, you want to start at seven thirty? Bill, Bill's away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gone.
Oh, you're gone. Can we move it to the following page?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I mean, you've got to see what, actually those things that you have to get done, you know, there are things that you have to. I'll be able to first. And the first was the date back from seven after break. I don't know.
So what's the after break?
Do you want to go eight, do you want to go eight twenty-second?
I can't hear you.
Do you want to go the eighth, the twenty-second?
I'm, I'm not available for the twenty-second. I don't, I mean, that, we've done back to back. All right, so we're moving the meeting from the first to the. Just so everyone understands, um, when we schedule the eighth, it will technically be a special meeting. Is there any others?
Okay, so our next meeting will be April eighth, I assume to this room.
Oh, yeah.
Someone better check.
There's always stuff that you can do that in the meetings, hopefully have to. Just to make sure if someone else gets moved, they know about it.
All right, have a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Second.
I'm not.
Second.
All right.